Yes, that'll be fine.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm gonna come back on at six forty-five because I, I, I want, we need to go eat dinner, but the, I can't, uh, my computer downstairs doesn't really work well for getting the bottle of, uh, livestream. And so I, if I can wait till six forty-five, I'll come back up and then I'll be on.
Okay, we'll look for you then. Thanks, Ann.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. So I, I believe we are now.
Okay, we good? All right, so let's, uh, everyone mute who's not speaking and I'll get us rolling. So, uh, welcome everyone and Happy New Year. I call the January twenty, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission Meeting to Order. The main purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold public hearings on housing entitled seventeen Housekeeping Code Amendments and Critical Area Regulations Amendments with the goal of making recommendations to the City Council on both items if we reach conclusion. For the meeting, before we move on to agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Under Governor Inslee's Proclamation twenty dash twenty-eight regarding open public meetings, this meeting will be held remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing and orally. Imagine Bothell Notice, City Website, and tonight's agenda all provide information to the public for providing comments. People wishing to comment were instructed to notify staff or provide written comments by three P M. today. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone and listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify wish materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provided advance notice are able to make comments under the audience comment section of the meeting, and email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. At this point, we'll take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Olson, let's see there, Commissioner Pistrup here, Commissioner Hurd, Commissioner Alder, and Commissioner Gustafson. So all commissioners are present and accounted for. Also in attendance are Department Director Michael Katterman, and Senior Planning Planners Dave Boyd and new Senior Planning Nathan Lamb, who we'll welcome shortly. Uh, for the commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I will be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you wish to speak, please indicate by holding up your speaker cards in the lower portion of your screen, and I will call on you as I see them. When, uh, we're in ribbon format, sometimes it's hard to see everyone, so I'll scroll back and forth and try to catch it, so please be patient. Uh, avoid having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second emotion, or participate in debate, and please mute your microphone when not speaking, and we'll see how many times we have to remind people to unmute when they are speaking. How can you, Mike? Uh, so the first item on the agenda is public comment. In keeping with Governor Inslee's Emergency Proclamation twenty twenty-eight regarding public gatherings and open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff no later than three P M. today were forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record. And these are public comments which are not part of the public hearing on the two items which are coming up later. So Director Cotterman, uh, please let us know if there are any comments received.
Uh, other than for the public hearing, Mr. Chair, there were no other comments received for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we'll move from that item to approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of the December sixteenth meeting way back last year. Uh, is there a motion to approve those minutes? Commissioner Olson.
I move to approve the December sixteenth minutes as written in the agenda.
All right, Commissioner Hurd.
My second emotion.
Is there any discussion regarding the minutes from the December sixteenth meeting? Seeing none, all in favor of adopting the minutes as submitted. And I see all in favor, so the minutes of the December sixteenth meeting are adopted. New business, I believe Director Cotterman has a bit of new business for us.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm very excited and happy to introduce to you our new senior planner, Nathan Lamb. Uh, Nathan comes to us from the city of Chesapeake, Virginia, where he's worked as a senior planner for the last four years, I believe, and, uh, worked on several long-range planning projects there. He is originally from the Pacific Northwest, so he's coming back home, and we're very glad that he has and very excited to have him on board. So he's going to be working primarily on implementation of the Canyon Park Subarea Plan. Uh, as you're all well aware, there's a lot to do on that, a lot of additional work and implementation needs to happen, and, uh, we're glad that Nathan's gonna be here to, to work on that as well as getting us ready for the update to the comprehensive plan in a couple of years. Uh, and then obviously, he'll be before the commission on several other items, other code amendments, and working on some other projects as those come up. So he's seen quite a bit of, of Nathan, and, uh, I'll let him say a little bit more about himself, and, uh, and then if you have any questions or anything you'd like to, to add, uh, from the commissioners, please feel free.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Hey, everyone, uh, pleasure to be here with you this evening. Um, Bothell is, has just given me such a warm welcome and has made me, um, just really happy to be here, um, happy that I made this transition. Um, I've watched a couple of your guys' meetings, and I can tell that you're, uh, very, uh, that you care a lot about, uh, your communities and effectuating change that you want to see. So yeah, it's just a, a pleasure to, um, get to meet you all finally. Thank you, Mike, and to the staff and to you guys for being patient as I transitioned over here. Um, like, like Mike said, I'm originally from, um, Nevada, but I, I grew up in Oregon, um, about an hour and a half south of Portland in Yam Hill County, if, if, if any of you have ever been there. So, um, so yeah, I, I actually went to UW-T for a couple of years and, um, transferred to Portland State where I finished up, uh, uh, under undergrad in community development and then a, a Merp degree, um, at Portland State as well for grad school. So, uh, moved to Virginia because I, I wanted a little bit of change, had some family out that way too, and, um, very much enjoyed learning about the Tine Water region and Hampton Roads. The beach was very nice, but I've missed the Pacific Northwest a lot and, uh, Washington in particular and, and this area, so I wanted to be back and, and here I am. So, yeah, um, if you guys have any questions, be happy to answer and, uh, looking, looking forward to, um, working with you all. So, thanks.
Nathan, you might want to tell them what a Merp degree is.
It's a Master of Urban and Regional Planning. So there's, there's a few different concentrations with that degree at Portland State, and I think they've even changed now, but, um, my, my focus was in land use. Tried to build a generalist skill set as a planner. And, um, in Chesapeake, I ended up, uh, doing some design review, uh, for, um, on, on incoming land use applications, rezonings and use permits and stuff like that, and, and, and our special policy areas in particular. So if council had some adopted guidelines or development standards, I would, um, make sure we, we applied those and make sure that, uh, applicants were compliant, complying with, um, in compliance with those, uh, standards and guidelines. Uh, I also did some historic preservation work. Uh, I staffed our Historic and Architecture Review Board. We had a, quite a large local historic district, um, in the city of Chesapeake, and I helped to issue certificates of appropriateness for, um, mostly homeowners who wanted to change something, uh, to the exterior of their home. So, um, I did, I've done a little bit of policy development and code amendment stuff, um, but I, I think I'm gonna be doing quite a bit more of that here. And, um, yeah, I've, I've got a lot to learn and, um, yeah, just looking forward, looking forward to, to jumping in and hitting the ground running. So, yep.
Today is the second day on the job, and we already have been working on things, so.
Yeah, it's like drinking from a fire hose a little bit, but, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll get up to speed. So, thank you all.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Hurd.
Thanks, this is Karsten. Hey, welcome, Nathan. Um, so good to have a fully, um, a full team on our planning, uh, staff. It's awesome that you're here. Um, so welcome. And my question is pretty superficial, but have you had a chance to, uh, explore Bothell yet? Are you still back east?
Uh, thank you. No, I, you know, I really haven't. Um, I've just, I, I got out here last week and I haven't found a place yet. So I've been, I've actually been staying in Oregon, but the last few days I've been staying in Linwood at a B and B where I am now. Got some of their lovely decor behind me, but I'm not, I really haven't had a chance to explore, you know, with the, with everything going on. Um, you know, Mike and Dave and I talked about that, how it would be nice to get out and, you know, do like a, a real tour, but, uh, we'll just have to be careful about the way we organize that and, and hopefully sooner than later I can do a real tour. Um, but so far I've just had a tour of City Hall. So, yeah, looking, looking forward to seeing the rest of Bothell.
That's cool. Well, welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Alderks.
Thank you, Chair. Um, hi, my name is Jenny, Jenny Alderks, and, um, really glad you're here, and I hope that you can do some exploring, um, of Bothell, especially walking along the river. Um, the trail next to the river is beautiful place. Um, couple times a week, we have the Bothell Black Lives Matter Run Club that goes out there, and so if you run into them, you would be welcome to join in and walking or running. Um, and then the other thing is, you said Yam Hill, Oregon, and I, I think it's becoming more well-known because of the journalist Nicholas Kristoff, who grew up there and, and farms there. But I'm just wondering, uh, how similar was your experience to some of the ways that he has documented life in Yam Hill?
You know what, admit, oh, thank you, um, for that welcome. And admittedly, I haven't read, uh, any of his material, but, um, I would just say personally, um, I, I have seen, um, how, how Yam Hill County has become more well-known over the, the last decade or so. Um, I, I was the class of twenty, um, two thousand and six, excuse me, um, when I left high school there, and, um, it's come a long way. Um, I think that people really started to take note of all of the wine country that's out there and the good food, uh, and just the quality of life. Um, I think, I, so I grew up in McMinnville, that's where I went to high school, and it's about a town of, I want to say about forty thousand. So, um, yeah, I, I have no regrets about growing up there, and, um, it, it is a beautiful place, and I would encourage you all to take a trip there sometime. Um, they've got hotels, so they've, the McMinnimans that they've got down there on their little, like, Main Street is Hotel Oregon, and I see you guys got Anderson School, um, in Bothell, which I'd love to go to. Um, so yeah, there's, there's quite a bit to do down there. Yep.
Cool, thank you. Um, I will also add that I source my olive oil from Yam Hill County. That's the only, uh, olive grove in the Pacific Northwest.
Nice, good, no, I'm gonna check them out.
There you go. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
I believe I visited them and brought back some. Any others, commissioners? Mr. Gustafson.
Hi, Nathan, welcome. Is it, I'll add my voice, we're so happy to have you here. And my question is, of all the different cities or areas you've lived in, Nevada, Yam Hill, Virginia, or here, what is your one favorite place, whether it's a park or something big or something small?
That's a very good question. Um, so when I was out in Virginia, um, there are a lot of historic and cultural assets on the East Coast and in that particular area of Virginia. Um, there is a place called Fort Monroe, uh, which is a big, um, uh, old fort from the Civil War era, um, that has been preserved exceptionally. Um, there's a lot of cool stuff to do there. There's been some adaptive reuse where they've put in restaurants and, um, they've, they've just done a, a good job with the groundskeeping and landscaping. Uh, it's on the water as well. Um, just very beautiful, um, on the coast of Virginia. Um, so that, that would probably be one of my, well, yeah, my favorite place, I think, out of, out of all the places, off the top of my head.
Uh, sounds great, thanks.
For a minute I thought you stumped him. We, we were not able to stump him with any questions during the interview process. I was waiting to see how he handled that.
That was, that was tough.
Okay, any others? Well, welcome, uh, Nathan, Senior Planner Lamb. Uh, we look forward to hearing from you on future agenda items and, uh, maybe when we can get together at some point, talk about Blue Crab versus Dungeness and other, oh, way back East Coaster. We can chat, so, and welcome, and, uh, great to have you aboard. So moving along, is there any other new business?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, that's all the new business we have this evening.
All right, and thank you. Uh, we will then move on to our public hearings. The first public hearing is around the housing and Title seventeen code amendments.
So I'll, I'll, um, uh, do a quick intro here. Uh, we are joined, uh, this evening by Christina Hayward and Sarah Carson from OTAC, who are our consultants on, uh, these code amendments that were funded by the, uh, Washington State Department of Commerce. Uh, we're also joined, uh, by Boyd Benson, our Public Works Utilities and Development Services Manager, uh, in case there are any questions about the, the Title seventeen, uh, housekeeping amendments, uh, that he drafted. So without, with that, and, uh, I'll turn it over to Christina to, uh, share her presentation and, and walk us through the, the amendments that are, I think mostly we've, we've covered the ground, but there are a few things, uh, a couple of new, new items that, um, came up at the last, uh, hearing that, uh, we've added in.
Thanks, Dave.
So Christina, before you start, um, Mr. Chair, I don't know if I heard, did you actually open the public hearing?
Actually, no, the thought occurred to me, I omitted that. So, let's, out of practice since last year. So let's open the public hearing on those, uh, housing and Title seventeen Housekeeping Code Amendments and proceed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so if anyone is following along in the packet, I believe this item begins on page six, and I'm going to bring up my presentation now. Can you see it all right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right. Um, so this presentation is going to quickly review some material that we've previously talked about, the purpose of the amendments, the process to date, and then I will touch on the changes since our last meeting on December sixteenth, uh, and then get into a little bit more detail about what those changes do, uh, with respect to the corner lot duplexes and then the short plots and other Title seventeen amendments, and then we'll have time for some questions. Uh, so why housing code amendments? These are related to House Bill nineteen twenty-three, which is intended to increase, uh, urban residential housing choice and affordability. Um, as Dave mentioned, this is funded through a grant, um, by the Washington Department of Commerce, and along with the grant funding, there are some special exemptions from CIPA and GMA appeal that makes this a really attractive process to undertake right now. As part of the process, we OTAC looked at the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan, Subarea Plans, um, most of, uh, well, titles, uh, eleven through eighteen of the Bothell Municipal Code, and then the Public Works Design and Construction Standards and Specifications. Uh, this is the overall process. We are here at the Planning Commission, Public Hearing and Recommendation. Planning Commission had study sessions in November and December. Next steps from here are completing CIPA and then on to City Council for a public hearing and adoption. At our last meeting, we heard a lot about considering methods to keep existing rental units in the market pool. This, uh, was driven, uh, I believe by some concerns about renters and affordability. Um, we also talked a little bit about modifications to the suggested amendments to flexible, um, parking standards, and so we've made those, uh, requested changes and, um, a strong desire to avoid regulating architectural character. And so that is, uh, I think everyone is in concurrence on that particular point. Uh, we do have some new recommendations, so, uh, along with some of your requested changes, uh, we have a new definition that we've proposed for the term regional trail. Um, we also, um, have a suggestion that would allow duplexes on non-conforming lots, which is different than what we have previously presented to you, and the modified provisions for parking flexibility related to corner lot duplexes. And then, um, last time, Boyd gave an overview of the Title seventeen amendments, the full recommended amendments are now included in the packet, uh, and so we can talk about those a little bit as well. All right, duplexes on corner lots. Um, so as a reminder, this action is one of two that the city of Bothell is undertaking, um, as part of that grant work. This action will authorize a duplex on each corner lot within all zoning districts that permit single family residences. Uh, as part of this amendment, we are authorizing duplexes through the residential use table and some related footnotes that also provide some incentives for retention and conversion of existing units and allow some flexibility in parking requirements. This is a representative sample of duplexes that are integrated into single-family zones, um, just to, to show the kinds of development that might occur under the proposed code. Um, and then we've also done some quick graphics showing what that might look like in a real-world example. So this, this graphic is modeled on a real corner lot in the city of Bothell. Um, and you can see that the existing house is rather small. Um, it is protruding into one of the two required front property line setbacks. Um, and so as part of the incentive of that, uh, that nonconformity could be maintained, uh, and expanded for the purposes of conversion to a new duplex. So you can see, uh, in the graphic on the right that, um, we are making use of that, uh, that allowance there on the, the south property line, but they are still required to comply with the other setback requirements on, um, the northwest and east property lines. Um, but this would allow a significant expansion that would make the, um, the space large enough to serve as a duplex unit. In an asymmetric view, it looks like this, so you can see the existing structure, uh, as it, as it is right now. That protrusion is highlighted in the dashboard towards the front, um, and then what it looks like in an expanded, uh, view. We did look into some options to retain existing units. Um, I believe one of the commissioners last time mentioned some legislation in California that would require, uh, a project to remain as a rental if it had been within the rental pool within the last seven or so years. Um, and we determined that this is, um, not, not feasible for implementation in the city of Bothell. There's no existing rental registry, and so this would be very difficult for staff to verify or even enforce in the future. Um, but we did also want to point out that there are some housing, uh, affordable housing covenants that could be applied to qualifying units, and it's that meets specific affordability standards that are intended to, uh, remain as affordable units through transfer of ownership or, um, tenancy. Um, the option to allow duplexes on non-conforming lots is new, uh, and in the packet materials we're presenting, uh, two options. So option one is this option that would allow duplexes on all corner lots regardless of conformity to minimum lot sizes, and then option two is the text that you had seen previously. So this, we did an analysis and we found that thirty-two percent of the corner lots in the city of Bothell that would be affected by these amendments are non-conforming to lot size and would therefore be ineligible for, um, use as a corner lot duplex under the code that we had discussed last time. Given the conversation that the Planning Commission has had related to, um, the need for, uh, increasing housing stock, we wanted to suggest this as an option for consideration, um, to allow duplexes on, on any corner lot, uh, whether, whether it is conforming to minimum lot size requirements or not. We also updated the flexible parking recommendations. We reduced the transit frequency requirement to qualify for reduction. This is again driven by Planning Commissioners discussions related to, um, to off-street parking requirements and finding as many ways to be flexible in those as possible. Um, so previously, uh, transit frequency was, um, provided by, uh, multiple routes at least four or more times per hour in a twelve-hour period, and we have reduced that transit frequency requirement to one of the other standards that's already used within the city of Bothell, which is just, uh, I think, uh, transit service at least twice per hour for a twelve-hour, uh, period. Uh, we've also increased that radius, uh, from a quarter mile to a half mile. So if you are, uh, if your property is within a half mile now of that kind of transit stop or, uh, regional trail, which was the other request, um, then, uh, you would have that, um, except, uh, the flexible parking requirements. And, uh, we, we did provide some language related to regional trails. Uh, so we did specify, uh, in our recommendation that the, um, the property needs to be within a half mile of pedestrian access to the regional trail. There are long segments of the trails that are not accessible, um, from, from a pedestrian point of view, and so having access, uh, to get onto the trail is, uh, important. We also provided a new definition of regional trail, um, which is, uh, shown here also in the packet, a shared use, non-motorized hard surface pathway that's a minimum of twelve feet in width if two-way or six feet in width for one-way sections, and is surfaced with a material that complies with the ADA. Uh, and then, um, some information about regional trails to help with interpretation. So regional trails are typically connecting different kinds of centers that have a lot of activity. Um, and the, the source for this definition relies on information from King County Department of Natural Resources and Parks, uh, as well as public work standards and specifications for the within-surfacing requirements. Uh, and that's because, um, King County is the owner of the regional trails, the Sammamish River Trail, the Burke Gilman Trail, and the, uh, North Creek Trail. Um, and those are shown on this map. So this is the half-mile buffer. Uh, you can see there's a few areas where the buffers overlap with each other. Um, the Burke Gilman Trail is shown here in, uh, whether, uh, buffer in blue, the Sammamish River Trail is shown with a buffer in red, and the North Creek Trail is shown with a buffer in green. Um, I did want to point out there is an error in the. I did want to point out, there is an error in the legend on the packet copy of this map that reverses the, the trail symbol and the city boundary symbol. I apologize for that if there was any confusion. Anyway, so this gives you an idea of the portions of the city where the access to the regional trails would be considered for flexibility and off-street parking requirements. The short plot amendments haven't changed significantly, but as a reminder, this action is the second of the two actions under the grant authorization. This would allow for the division or re-division of land into nine lots, which has increased from the current, the current threshold is four lots. To, to initiate that action, we've got changes to definitions, some, some changes to the thresholds for PDs and CBA categorical exemptions that are intended to make the processing easier and more efficient for city staff. An overhaul of the application requirements, again, to help improve efficiency and minimize review cycles. And then the elimination of frontage improvement exemptions that we talked a little bit about last time. And again, these haven't, these haven't really changed since the December 16th meeting. So this is, this is just for review. This is, this is the information that Boyd presented last time. So we talked about the differences in providing a sidewalk versus some other kind of pedestrian paths. Some challenges related to how that is maintained and its durability. And then also some exemptions based on valuation. If, if it doesn't make sense to provide the full frontage improvements. And so that full language is now in the packet materials as well, along with all of the different housekeeping amendments that are going along with the, the rest of the Title 17 amendments. So with that, are there any questions?
Did you put your, pose the, Sarah, thank you.
Commissioner Curd.
Thanks. This is Carsten. And thanks, Ms. Hayworth, for the presentation. That was really great. Good to get a refresher after such a long year, I guess. I wanted to ask a question about the definition of regional trails. Specifically, you mentioned that you got the definition from King County Department of Natural Resources and Parks. And the North Creek Trail travels through Snohomish County. And some of the newer portions of the North Creek Trail are guided by policy from Snohomish County Public Works. And in that, in their definitions, I believe that some elements of, like the width requirements are down to 10 feet in quote urban areas. Not that there are any urban areas on the North Creek Trail right now. But I was wondering if there was flexibility in terms of definitions to allow consistency across the North Creek Trail, even though it's into jurisdictions.
As it's currently written, it's, it's very specific, a 12-foot width. And I should, I should clarify that the suggested definition is informed by the, the King County DNRP. So they don't have this specific definition. It was informed by how King County manages and operates their trails. But I think that's a good point and it would, it would be possible to introduce that kind of flexibility to the definition.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I just like to follow up on that response. I believe that all of the sections of the North Creek Trail that we built in Snohomish County do meet the, the 12-foot standard. And, and with the exception of the portion that where it becomes a one-way couplet on the levees through North Creek Business Park, and that's why we added the language that allows for two six-foot one-way segments. We also avoided language that says that it has to be paved because those levy top trails are not paved. But they do need to meet ADA accessibility requirements, which also would be cyclical, similar to the Cross Kirkland Corridor, which is not paved, but accessible by bike.
Commissioners, Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. Amanda Olson here. I had kind of a similar question about the trail. So I've been walking the San Amish River Trail kind of a lot. And there are definitely parts of it that aren't six feet or 12 feet wide. Is there a good understanding right now of what parts of these trails are being excluded by the 12 or even 10-foot width?
We did not do a detailed analysis of the width of the trails.
Okay, I would, that just kind of piqued my interest. I don't know, I don't, I don't know that in context, it's like a huge deal, but it's curious just because that's a pretty established trail that's really easy to navigate. And it, it doesn't, it's not all 12 feet wide for sure.
Comments, questions? I had a bit of a comment regarding the radius and particular how 405 impacts the radius. I live fairly close to Canyon Park Middle School. And by the map, I'm about a half mile from North Creek. But you can't get there from here without going the distance around. Any concerns or thoughts about how that impacts accessibility to the trails?
So we, we talked about this when we were putting this, this definition and this change recommended amendment together. And we, we went with a simple buffer. We did consider whether it would make more sense to have a half-mile walking distance. And it just seemed complicated for relatively few parts of the trail. But if that's something that the commission would like to, to consider, then we could provide some alternative language.
And I'd add that, that's also the reason that we wrote the code, the language, that it was a half-mile distance to access to the trail. So the, the buffer identifies the areas where, where you might be able to qualify. But an applicant would still have to show that they are within a half-mile of access to the trail.
Okay, thank you. We had a similar discussion around affordable housing, parking, and reached the conclusion that it was a huge challenge to determine walking distance in every case. We have grappled with that before. I just wanted to ask a question. Others? Commissioner Aldrich.
I want to thank you, sorry, Commissioner Aldrich here. Thank you, Christina, for the presentation. I just want to thank you for it. One question I would have was do you, of the housekeeping items that you went through, was there anything of note that, that you feel like might be of interest to the, to us to, to make note of?
I would defer that to Boyd Benton.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I can address that if you'd like. But I think the main one that you may find of interest is the housekeeping for landscape maintenance. That's something that's in elsewhere in the municipal code, but currently in Title 17, when we go out to site distance clearing or the rest, it's, it's not covered within that section of the code, although sidewalk maintenance is. So that's, that's one of the ones that's, that's kind of new and then you could raise some questions. Like I said, it's, it's current. I believe the rest is, is pretty straightforward. We are putting some clarification language in the permitting section with respect to right-of-way use permits. Currently, those don't expire, which you can guess isn't the best thing to have. So we've, we've mimicked language from other permits within the municipal code to align those expiration dates with other permits. I think that's about it unless you have any other specific questions.
Commissioners? So Director Cotterman is our next step to ask for public comment or testimony, if any?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And I don't believe we had anyone sign up to speak on this item.
Okay, so lacking anyone signing up or calling in, should we close the public hearing on this?
I, yes, you can. You don't actually have to take specific action to close the public hearing. I got clarification from the city attorney's office. So if you take, if you take action this evening to make the recommendation, that would in effect close the public hearing.
Okay, so I guess we will proceed then from there, unless the commissioners have a desire to, Commissioner Olson.
Should we discuss the option one versus option two for non-conforming lots? And sort of get a commission consensus on how we would want to proceed with that?
Yes, certainly should.
I like option two, where we allow it on non-conforming lots. I'll, I'll get started.
Okay, other commissioners? Commissioner Gutson, listen, Commissioner Curd.
Sarah Gussipson here. Yes, I think the option that allowed for it on non-conforming lots sounds the best. Is there any unintended consequence of that beyond? I mean, I'm just trying to think, what, what could potentially be the unintended consequence?
I don't think that one's really one where we're, we're gonna get caught by unintended consequences. The consequence is pretty clear that it would allow a duplex even on a, on 32% of lots in cities of Bothell that are non-conform, non-conforming with regard to size. So the, in general, the city of Bothell has relatively large lots. Much of the single-family zones are 9,600. So there are, and I don't know that we did a, the analysis got into how, how many of the non-conforming lots were in each zone. Actually, I think you did.
Yeah, looking at the.
So we think, basically, the bottom line, we think that even those non-conforming lots are, are big enough to accommodate a duplex, given the setbacks and the, including the exemptions to encourage use, reuse of existing structures.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, Dave, maybe you could, you could elaborate on this. If I'm recalling correctly, what this addresses is an existing nonconformity, but it will not allow development of the duplex that would create a nonconformity. Is that correct?
Correct.
Still have to meet the setback requirements and other things. They wouldn't.
Yeah, the, the incentives for retaining existing structures do allow explicitly allow extending a non, an existing nonconformity, but not getting any closer, not, not increasing it.
So if, so for example, the, the example that Christina showed, where you had a portion of the house that extended into the front yard setback, they could, if they had an addition, that could also extend that 20 feet into the front yard setback is, is how that would work.
Right.
I think those are important considerations for the committee.
Any other questions regarding that, oh yeah, Commissioner Curd?
Thanks. This is Carsten. I am in agreement. I support adding the language to incorporate the grandfathered issues like setbacks and stuff. And I just want to thank you for listening to our feedback and like actively finding that, that consideration because that wasn't something that was on our radar before. So that's really helpful. Cool.
Commissioner Aldrich.
Jenny Aldrich here. I was going to ask if we could go back to the slide that shows what that setback looks like. But I, I don't know if that's necessarily like needed at this moment. But I, I might enjoy looking at it again just to get a better sense of, of what we're talking about right here in this moment. But to the overall conversation about option two is that's, that's the way I'm leaning as well. I like the flexibility of, of having more, it's, it's always, it me, to me, it seems like there will be an increase of, of properties that would then be possible to become duplexes. And that's, that's really what I think the commission has been discussing over the last several meetings. And, and that has been the aim and the goal is to be able to diversify and increase housing options. And this, and option two would be the way to do that. So I'm in support.
Any other discussion, commissioners? So Director Cotterman, should we poll the commissioner or take a vote on this matter?
Is the, I think you've gotten some direction consensus. I guess my question would be to, to Dave, whether is option two what's included in the commission's findings and recommendation at this point?
They are both included.
They're both included. Okay.
You know, there's a choice.
So I would say when you get to the point of adopting the recommendation, that's when you'll need to be clear about which option you're, you're making.
Okay, we will walk through the recommendation before we, we pull it on there. So I'll bookmark that. Other issues to discuss on this, is there a need or desire to walk through the code amendments as luminous as they are?
I, I am prepared to pull that up on the screen if you do want to do that.
Why don't we pull it up for a quick look and we'll, we'll move through quickly to just the changes and.
Are you seeing that?
Yes. Can, okay, I can enlarge it. So I will scroll back and forth, commissioners, but I only see about half of you on the ribbon. So if you want to weigh in, please bear with me and maybe I'm in.
I'll, I'll be looking as well, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I see a nice pattern. Here we go. We scroll, there we go. So we have there the direction of the definition of the trail. Does have the minimum language and the, the concern was raised that there are sections where it's not 12 feet. I would say particularly over the bridges on the trail. I'd refer to the staff if that's a concern.
If it is a concern, I, I think we, I, I don't think we would dilute this, the intent of this by changing the minimum to 10 feet as Commissioner Curd's said was the standard in Snohomish County. And Commissioner Olson said was the case, or at least less than 12 feet in some parts of this memory river trail.
I think that one option would be to reduce that to 10 feet. I think another possibility, just for out there is we're only talking about three trails. So we could also maybe identify them by name.
That's true. That's true. Um, one reason, um, that we were con- concerned about that would be, I guess, we'd have to make a code amendment if there were additional ones, uh, added, but also the fact that the, the North Creek Trail has a, has a, um, has a gap in Canyon Park and, um, so there was some concern that, uh, that it, it isn't really functioning fully as a, uh, regional trail north of that and won't until that gap is, is completed. But it's a relatively small gap and, and, uh, can be negotiated, so.
I see two commissioners seeking to comment. So, uh, Commissioner Piestra first and then Commissioner Olson.
Uh, hi, this is Commissioner Piestra. Quick question regarding the definition as it has come down from King County. Is there any verbiage in there regarding safety? I, I've, I've been on these regional trails and with my kids and been in some situations that I would consider dicey. Uh, to, to, to call it lightly, uh, anything that is required from a safety standpoint?
I, I would just say that the width, uh, requirements are, are primarily safety related. Go allow, um, twelve feet allows, uh, you know, two cyclists, the pairs of cyclists, uh, riding side by side to pass, uh, safely on the trail or, or, uh, you know, groups of pedestrians walking side by side.
I guess two is, I guess the speed of those bicyclists, uh, was, was my issue.
Well, I do know that in King County, the, the both regional trails have a fifteen mile an hour speed limit, but, um, that's.
Ignored.
Enforcement is not a strong point.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Olson, did you?
I just figured I would throw this out there. Um, I don't know that it's going to be successful, but you know, since we're talking about, basically this is for the purpose of reducing parking, um, near access to these trails. Either naming them or just taking out the part that says that is a minimum twelve feet in width, like just that last part of that sentence. So it's just shared use, non-motorized ADA accessible hard surface pathway, and then just cut right to regional trails typically connect. I mean, we know what we're talking about. People will choose to use them or they won't, no matter what's in the code. Um, so I'm wondering if that just simplifies it, but I, I feel like if you're a city planner, you probably have a lot of opinions on that. So I'm kind of curious what Dave and Mike are gonna say.
Um, I'm just showing that suggested, uh, change here. And, um, I think that would be fine, uh, to, to remove that detail and it would, uh, it would, um, avoid, uh, a potential sticking point that, you know, if, um, people did dispute, um, the width of the trail.
I guess I'd have a concern on the other side, whether that would open up other areas to be considered a regional trail when we might not consider them to be a regional trail.
Is there some kind of, um, I hope it's okay that I asked this to tack on. Is there some kind of regional authority, whether that's King or Snohomish County, that just lists them and we can say listed here? You know, there's a good map at Snohomish River Trail Park that lists all the regional trails. Can we say, you know, listed in this formal place where people list these things?
There are, I think the counties each have, uh, their, uh, their own, uh, bike maps, um, that include regional trails. Perhaps the easiest thing, um, would be just to name them is particularly if the planning commission, uh, is comfortable with including the North Creek Trail. Uh, it's, uh, with its small, uh, existing gap.
I'm scanning commissioners to see if there's any comments. I don't see any. Speaking for myself, I, I, I think the gap is, um, not much of a concern because the gap would fall within the half mile radius anyway. So if you're somewhere near the gap, I'm thinking you'll be within a half mile of where it popped up again. Is that a fair statement? It is where I think it is.
Yeah, um, the, the, I guess the issue would be if you're, um, north of the gap, um, does that regional trail really connect you to areas, uh, uh, to the south? Uh, and should it, uh, should it be included, but?
Okay.
By the same token, it may connect you to areas to the north.
Currently Snohomish County hasn't finished its portion of Snohomish, uh, of the, uh, North Creek Trail, so.
Does the trail end at the city limit line?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay. Well, maybe that gets back to the, uh, the issue of, of access. If that part of the regional trail isn't really connected, then maybe we could determine that you don't really have access to the regional trail. Maybe more of a, of a administrative interpretation at that point. But I think also to keep in mind, the intent is for North Creek Trail to be a regional trail.
It is.
And that is on the capital plan, isn't it, too?
Uh, I don't know if it's in, actually, uh, uh, in the six-year plan of, uh, transportation improvements, but it is, it's definitely, uh, in the longer range of Philly's plan and it's identified also in the, in the Canyon Park, um, recently adopted Canyon Park plan.
Sounds like we're wrestling with the question of whether naming the trails and having that gap at North Creek is more of an issue than not naming and having the, a minimum width specified, which is not limited in certain portions.
I think another option may be to just add the word, um, that is pathway that is, uh, overall a minimum of twelve feet in width? Or generally a minimum of twelve feet in width?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest, uh, that.
Yeah, maybe generally ten to meet this Snohomish County part and.
We could say ten to twelve.
Yeah.
It is a range. I think the, the key, I believe, is really just, I, making sure that we're, we're putting criteria in place that result in those three trails that we know are regional trails. And we're not creating confusion for applicants or the staff in terms of what is or is not a regional trail.
And then, oh, we're good.
So this way we do both.
Okay.
Jenny Alderks here. I do like the, sorry, I don't think I was seen, so I'm just jumping in.
You were off the ribbon, so it's fine.
Okay, thank you. Um, I do like the suggestion of generally ten to twelve feet in width. Um, as a way to just kind of cover, cover the possibilities. Um, because I think my other question is, what kind of liability does that open the city up to if somebody were to go digging into the code? And say, well, this part of the trail is not ten feet wide. Um, and then who do they take that to? And what are the consequences for the city when they are met with a challenge to the, or, or challenge that there is a violation of the code that then the city is responsible for? What, what does that mean or does that happen? Could that happen?
I, I would have to, uh, check on that. My, my sense is that, uh, that the liability for the use of the trail, um, uh, isn't going to come from this, this code provision, which applies to, parking reductions for corner lot duplexes. Um, I, I don't know if Boyd, uh, has any thoughts on that? If you're still with us, Boyd?
Yeah, no, I agree with what you just said.
Yeah, I, I don't see a liability from that standpoint where this is likely to be an issue would be on a project. If the, if, for example, the staff reads it a certain way and approves a project for a reduction in parking based on their access to a regional trail. And then someone appealed that decision or that project and argued that it really wasn't a regional trail because it was only nine and a half feet wide. Um, then that would just go through an appeal process. I think that, that's how I would see this playing out in terms of being an issue for, for a specific project.
Mr. Olson.
Thank you. Um, to that point, Director Cotterman, if someone, i- if that did go through appeal, would that generally that's in there now sort of cover that? So you could say, well, generally, so even though this part is eight and a half feet wide, we're gonna allow it?
That's how I would read that. Yes, that's how I would apply it, uh, if I were the one making that interpretation. And I think that's how the staff would argue that in front of a hearing examiner.
Okay, cool. That was my main concern, so I'm happy with this. Thank you.
So any other discussion on this definition? Seeing none? So we got the table, the use table. So here are the two options. And we, we had a little bit of discussion around this with a number of commissioners weighing in in favor of option two. I didn't see any opposed, any other, a- and we will address this when we vote on the recommendations. So any other questions around this? Move forward. And that moves us off the duplexes onto the, uh, four versus nine lots. We had a little discussion around this. So, four to nine, five to ten, questions or comments? If, I think facilitating these smaller developments, reducing the cost. Exceptions.
And then moving ahead to the parking reduction that shows up here.
Allowing that parking reduction. I'm not seeing any wish or questions or comments.
This, um, section here applies these to the Sunrise Valley View neighborhood in the downtown district of downtown suburbia.
I guess just a question of interest, why, why is that separately listed? Is it because it's in the downtown area?
Yeah, when we did the downtown plan, we created a whole new set of, um, uh, zoning districts. Um, and, and including, even though we pretty much kept the, the single family areas, uh, in this area, that, uh, the requirement's the same. We need to be consistent with the rest of it. We, we, uh, created this new district, single family district. And this just repeats the same, uh, this jumps back to the corner lot duplexes. This, uh, title fourteen, uh, provision is just for consistency that, that, uh, this, um, categorical exemption threshold is the same as, as our short, they're currently the same as the short plats, so just to keep them the same. We're looking into some, some, um, issues with, uh, notification that needs to happen with that, but, um, doesn't change the, the code, um, provisions. And then, uh, significant changes to the, subdivision, the requirements for a complete application for a subdivision, which just to, to match what we're currently already doing, um, with, uh, short plats. We basically require the same set of, kind of drawings that we require for, for full subdivisions.
And these requirements give you the information you need to review the application without, uh, uh, including unnecessary steps. You comfortable with that?
Uh, we, we believe so and, and the, the, the main benefit, uh, of a short plat is in the review time and the, and not having to go through the hearing process. So, um, uh, these are, these are things that, uh, that like I said, we're, we're currently requiring applicants to, to provide anyway. And most would, would be doing this, uh, anyway, in order to, to have a short plat application that's actually buildable. This was a change that our development review folks, uh, requested. And then we get into the title seventeen, uh, changes. Oh, this just is updating references. Boyd, feel free to jump in as, as I'm scrolling through this if you have any comments.
For sure. Um, the section just went through, it's just, it's really old and was, uh, installed when we first changed things and it's out of it. So one just passed that might be of interest. We still think it's housekeeping, but if you just back up a bit, um, the, uh, little. So, uh, the city has the right to request additional right-of-way. Um, the public works director has that right. And so we've added that letter E down there. Make sure that we can secure right-of-way for plan, transportation improvement programs. What that means is if a developer comes in, we work with them in the first place to make sure that they don't site a building in an area of, let's say, a Bothell way wide, and that just really reinforces that.
So, uh, would this, uh, for instance, be one reason why you sometimes see it and edit, uh? Actually more, I guess, but when you have a development, you'll see roads stubbed out and they're required for future connectivity?
Uh, for sure, pretty close, but it's more that, let's say, uh, development comes in along unapproved right-of-way. And they want to put in their curb gutter sidewalk and we come back and say, well, actually this road's going to be widened out to three lanes instead of two. So you're gonna have to ship that back and provide additional right-of-way. We have the right and the standards to do so and elsewhere and we want to make it really clear in this section, just so that a developer doesn't install sidewalk, curb gutter, landscape strip, and then we have to come out and rip it out in the future and push it out where they're accommodating travel. And then we have to come out and rip it out in the future and push it out where they're dominating travel.
It could be particularly important on Ninth Avenue as we discuss future improvements there in the Kenyon Park Plan.
Sure, for sure.
Commissioner Curd.
One, one more real quick, if I can just point out, 17.08.140. Currently, right-of-way permits are not required for capital improvement projects, but we still require utility permits. And it's proposed that those all be bundled under one. That's a city project. We still get view by all departments and the rest, but it didn't make a lot of sense to not require some permits and require others. We added that in as well.
Okay, Commissioner Curd, you have a question or comment?
I did, thanks. This is Carsten. I don't want to jump backwards too far, but when I was reading through the Title 15 subdivisions, requirements for a complete application, that's on page seven and eight of the word document you have here, I think. Yeah, right, 15, there, yeah. I was looking under the map or sketch, including all these things, and I didn't see anywhere that critical areas were specifically called out. Is that a separate site plan that the city would require? Or is that under this application?
This is Christina. So under one E, that requires other conditions on the track, including watercourses, marshes, rock outcrop, trees, and all of those kinds of significant features. So that's where that would be triggered.
So do those other significant features include, let's say, geologically critical areas like erosion hazard and landslide hazard? Or just watercourses?
In, in my interpretation and my understanding of how development current planning staff have been using it, it includes all critical areas.
Okay. I just wonder if adding, I mean, it appears to be pretty general language, which is great so that it encompasses a lot of, you know, differences across lots that might be subdivided. But I wonder if specifically calling out critical areas instead of leaving that as other significant features might be important? I don't know.
So, any on that?
I wouldn't see any problem with adding, including critical areas at the end of that. I think in practice, the, when we review this, we would check the site for it to see if it included any geological hazard areas.
I think it's always better to err on the side of being clear. So if we can clarify that that is the intent and that's also been the practice, I think it's good to include that. The one caveat I would add to that is if this is language, and I believe it is, this is language pretty much from our plat requirements as well. So if the same language appears elsewhere in the code and it's different, we'll want to make sure that we add that at some point to the other language as well. Otherwise, it creates some confusion and some question as to whether or not it was intended. The other one that doesn't specifically list it is intended to include it or not. But that's, that's an issue we'll deal with. I think it's better to be specific here.
So Commissioner Curd had addressed your concern?
It does, thank you.
All right, so we'll proceed.
The biggest change here, I think the most significant change is has to do with the frontage improvements and removal of exceptions to frontage improvements that we discussed last time around.
Mr. Chair. I noticed we've lost video on Commissioner Alderks. Could we just ask her to confirm that she's still, still with us?
Thank you, yes, I am still here. And my start video option is currently grayed out, and so I don't know how to start video again.
All right.
So I tried. I would love to join with video, but I'm not, I don't really know how to do that right now.
Okay, well, if you have a question or a comment, then please do chime in and we'll.
Thank you, I will.
Well, that gets us through the code language. I can also pull up the findings if there's any interest in.
Yes, let's do that. Let's do that. Seeing any other questions about the code?
Okay.
So these are the things that we will be voting on at the end. Tongue one, history. Describing the location and the action. Around process notice.
Mostly boilerplate. The meat of this is in the planning commission deliberations.
So for the commissioners, we want to be sure that any significant items we discussed that we want to be part of the record be included here. Trust we've all reviewed. And seeing anyone voting in. So 11, speaking to the purpose, improving efficiency. Simplifying the process. Okay, not seeing any questions or comments, move forward. We have our exhibits, we did hear testimony earlier. All right, so our conclusions. Drafted and reviewed by the public and admission. Recommending them to improve choice and affordability consistent with GMA and best interest of public health, safety, and welfare. And not seeing any. I mean, the written, not seeing any questions or comments. So we are recommending adoption of these amendments as attached. And again, that would be with the option that we agreed to regarding conforming laws.
Correct that out. And the revisions related to regional trails.
Yes. So I will ask if there is a motion to adopt these recommendations from a commissioner? Commissioner Curd.
Thank you, this is Carsten. I move that we adopt the findings, conclusions, and recommendations as amended regarding the Title 17 code amendments.
And is there a second? Commissioner Olson.
I second Commissioner Curd's motion.
Okay, is there any discussion around that recommendation?
Mr. Chair. Could I ask for a clarification on that? I heard, part of what I heard from Commissioner Curd specifically mentioned Title 17. And I believe there, are there other titles that are included in this?
There are. We've, this is housing plus Title 17 code amendments. The other titles included relate to the housing code amendments.
So I just want to make sure that the motion is clear that it's a recommend, recommending adoption of all of the amendments identified various titles in the findings, conclusions, and recommendation. It's not just Title 17.
So Commissioner, would you like to clarify your?
I would, thank you. This is Carsten. I revise my previous motion to move that we adopt the findings, conclusions, and recommendations as amended regarding the housing and Title 17 code amendments.
All right. And Commissioner Olson, is your, still stand to that?
Still seconded.
All right. So commissioners, discussion around this motion? And scrolling back and forth, seeing no further discussion. I'll ask for on these conclusions, recommendations. So, see. I'm going to do a roll since we don't have Commissioner Alderks to do a visual. So rolling through, Commissioner Olson.
Yay.
Commissioner Maestrop?
Yay.
Commissioner Curd?
Yay.
Commissioner Alderks?
Yay.
And Commissioner Gustafson?
Yay.
And I also vote yay. So the commission unanimously votes to approve the conclusions, findings, and recommendations as amended. And that brings us to a close of this item.
Thank you.
So I'm going to suggest a 10-minute break at this point, since we have one additional item that would probably be of similar length. So I've got 7:25 on my screen. We'll come back in 10 minutes and reconvene to discuss the critical area regulation amendments. So we stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Actually, Christina, Sarah? Recessed, not adjourned.
Oh, stand recessed, I'm sorry. Practice, practice.
So just by a brief recap of a little bit of the history of these particular regulations. The last major update of the municipal code 1404, which is the wetland regulations was back in 2010. And then more recently in 2019, there was an update to the city's shoreline master program specific wetland regulations. And these two bodies of wetland regulations apply exclusively within their separate areas of the city. So there isn't any kind of overlap or tension between the two. And I kind of alluded to this earlier. We also received a review by another firm, sort of a more overarching, all encompassing kind of review of 1404. And looking at not just wetland regulations, but some of the other critical areas, sections, which was specifically in support of the surface water master plan. And so we looked at that as well. And then finally, just to mention that there have been significant changes in ecology, wetland guidance and best available science since that last major update of the wetland regulations in 2010. And there's even, you know, just late breaking guidance updates as of October 2020, which is, you know, just a few months back. So we are focused on incorporating the most recent information and guidance from the state that we can. Next slide. So kind of to recap what we heard and then what we did, based on the last November planning commission meetings, I think the 18th was the one where we had lots of really good discussion and got some good direction. And we talked about the current city buffers for wetlands, and then also kind of outlined what ecology's science-based buffer looked like, and then what kind of implications they have for future development potential within the city. And discovered through a variety of analyses that the, the impacts and the implications of switching to ecology's buffers were not very significant when it comes to hampering or interfering or reducing the development potential within the city. And we can talk more about that again if you want to revisit that. And we also talked a lot about the increasing emphasis by the state and federal agencies on these kind of alternative mitigation solutions, which are no longer really alternative. They're kind of the main game here at the moment, mitigation banking and in-lofee programs. And the direction we heard at that last meeting was to develop a science-based set of mitigation regulations that's most consistent with ecology's guidance. But I think also kind of respecting and leaving, you know, some windows open for, you know, local solutions within the city. So that we're not kind of putting our finger on the scale, so to speak, to tip people one direction or another, but really hoping that through a thoughtful process and looking at the science and local conditions and all the different approaches that the applicants would end up proposing in the city could then approve whatever the best solution happens to be for a particular project. So that is incorporated into these regulations. And next slide. And we also talked about a possibility of reducing a buffer based on non-vegetative enhancements. And the idea there was to recognize that maybe addition of things like snags or large, witty debris in certain circumstances might warrant some reduction in the buffer. And I'll talk more about that one later. And the direction we really heard on that one was just sort of to continue evaluating and, you know, maybe have more discussions with ecology to explore the potential for that. And then finally, and this was kind of a smaller part of the discussion, there was just some discussion about how and whether to incorporate ecology's language, which has some sort of a limited exemptions for a certain category for wetlands. Wetlands that are smaller than 4,000 square feet and then meet a bunch of other criteria, like they're not connected to rivers or streams. They're not in shoreline jurisdiction. They score low for habitat points, you know, and a couple other provisions and sort of different flexibilities when it comes to avoiding impacts to those particular features. And so I think the direction that we heard was to include those exemptions. And we talked about that the origin of those was the Department of Ecology's model code. And so it is science-based, supported and something that Department of Ecology had developed. And next slide. And so kind of pulling all of that together, all of the input that the planning commission provided on those topics primarily and a few others as well. We also have been interacting pretty intensively with Department of Ecology staff, multiple staff at the agency have been involved in providing some review and feedback of, of the entire set of amendments that we are proposing and presenting tonight. But also we specifically asked for direction in a couple of key areas too, just to make sure that we were solid on some of the areas that didn't have as much of a history, either in the guidance or in the city of Bothell. And then we also, again, of course, looked at existing ecology guidance documents. Specifically, there's the guidance for CIO updates, which is back from 2016. That document actually included a model code in an appendix. And so we used that to some degree. But then we also took a really good look at the recent, very recent update that ecology is preparing to its mitigation in Washington State guidance. And this is a, a guidance document that's not just a Department of Ecology. It's actually a collaboration with the United States Environmental Protection Agency, as well as the Army Corps of Engineers. So it's a sort of three big agencies all charged with implementing, you know, water quality and wetlands protections. And so that document was, was heavily consulted. And then finally, we also had a kind of a list of potential code amendments that parametrics had put together. Again, they were looking at changes that maybe would support the surface water master plan update. And so we took some of the, you know, the recommendations in there that were kind of housekeeping, more non-substantive, eliminating redundancy, those types of things. And I don't talk a lot about that in the, on the next few slides, because they are pretty non-substantive, like I said. But we can also go through those in greater detail if you have questions about anything that you saw there. Next slide. So just talking a little bit more about what we did then, for the buffer-related amendments, we incorporated ecology's buffer strategies. And if you'll recall, there was kind of two pathways. There's a set of buffers where you just use the buffer. You don't apply any of the suite of kind of standard minimization measures. You don't have to think about connecting to other critical areas or, you know, provide wildlife corridors. And so there, there's that strategy. And then there's also another set of buffers that applicants can choose to apply if they are willing and able to commit to applicable parts of the minimization measure table. And if it applies to their project, also provide protected corridors to adjacent wildlife or, you know, other habitat areas. And so both of those options are included in this regulations package. Another modification that we made was to, and I think you, you saw pretty much the final language, I think in the last memo. But we made just a couple tweaks to it since then. But basically just elaborating a little bit more and providing a little more clarity based on staff kind of experience implementing the provision that establishes where an existing buffer kind of stops at certain existing legal improvements, whether those are roads or big paved parking areas, other structures, that sort of thing. You have to meet certain criteria and it also is subject to critical areas report. So and that pretty much is applicable to new developments that are trying to figure out what buffer might apply to their project. And if you're you know, 150 feet away, but you have a great big parking lot in between you and, and the wetlands and the buffer would stop kind of at the, at the edge of that parking lot. Next slide. And then there's a package of mitigation-related amendments, and that's the more, probably the most robust section of amendments. Some of the primary things we did is just to more clearly lay out what the different mitigation approaches are. So it has a little bit of a, kind of a primer, but not too intensively detailed on mitigation banks, you know, what those are simply in-lofee programs, and then identifying kind of three different types of what's called permuti responsible mitigation. And so that's been a little bit more of the common practice up until the la, you know, well, until very recently. Is that applicants are responsible for developing their own mitigation site for their own impacts. So those three approaches are laid out. And then the next kind of main item was that in place of the city code identifying a preference for onsite mitigation and, but then allowing some offsite mitigation if you can, you know, present evidence or, you know, science to support that offsite is better, kind of making it a little less, less establishing a preference and more just establishing a process for selecting the best mitigation approach on a site and project-specific basis. And these two little blue asterisks there are just kind of a reminder to me to let you know that those, that particular provision and other ones that are marked by those asterisks are ones where we requested some more specific review and focus by the Department of Ecology, just to make sure that we were on the right track. And then the thing that we did there was to update the definitions of mitigation methods. And so again, there's just sort of fine tuning, basically some definitions of, you know, what is restoration and there's rehabilitation and, what's the other one? Rehabilitation, restoration, oh, and re-establishment. So defining those categories. And then also defining preservation, which there is increasing emphasis on that as a tool for compensatory mitigation, which is kind of a new one. And then defining enhancement a little bit as well. So those definitions were updated using the the edge of that parking lot. Next slide. And then there's a package of mitigation-related amendments. And that's the more, probably the most robust section of amendments. Some of the primary things we did is just to more clearly lay out what the different mitigation approaches are. So it has a little bit of a kind of a primer, but not too intensively detailed on mitigation banks, you know, what those are simply in lieu fee programs. And then identifying kind of three different types of what's called permittee responsible mitigation. And so that's been a little bit more of the common practice up until the last, you know, well, until very recently, is that applicants are responsible for developing their own mitigation site for their own impacts. So those three approaches are laid out. And then the next kind of main item was that in place of the city code identifying a preference for onsite mitigation and but then allowing some offsite mitigation if you can, you know, present evidence or, you know, science to support that offsite is better, kind of making it a little less less establishing a preference and more just establishing a process for selecting the best mitigation approach on a site and project-specific basis. And these two little blue asterisks there are just kind of a reminder to me to let you know that those, that particular provision and other ones that are marked by those asterisks are ones where we requested some more specific review and focus by the Department of Ecology, just to make sure that we were on the right track. And then the thing that we did there was to update the definitions of mitigation methods. And so again, there's just sort of fine tuning, basically, some definitions of, you know, what is restoration? And there's rehabilitation and what's the other one? Rehabilitation, restoration, oh, and reestablishment. So defining those categories and then also defining preservation, which there is increasing emphasis on that as a tool for compensatory mitigation, which is kind of a new one. And then defining enhancement a little bit as well. So those definitions were updated using the different ecology guidance documents. And then I just mentioned this a little bit, but there's more of an update to the preservation-related provisions. And they're based on just sort of experience and ecology's review enhancement that is often kind of a solution for mitigating for wetland impacts. There's just kind of been a general finding, particularly in urban areas, that those enhancement efforts are not sustainable in the long term. It's a constant, ongoing battle, oftentimes with invasive plant species or you know, sort of other kind of human-caused disturbances that in the end leave you with, you know, a mitigation site that doesn't really appropriately compensate for what your original impact was. And so that's why they have started to look more closely at preservation as a tool for trying to protect and preserve those existing high-functioning wetlands that may be still remaining, particularly in urban areas, and protecting those rather than trying to implement less effective enhancement as mitigation. And again, this kind of double asterisks, just sort of notes that we had some good conversations with ecology to make sure we understood that and we're integrating that into the regulations appropriately. So as David mentioned, just in the last few days, really, after we had sent out the proposed regulations based on a lot of ecology feedback and discussion, we received a little bit more feedback. So Friday and yesterday, we got kind of four pieces of direction. Some of these are just quite minor. For example, that first one is to just modify the language that required a notice title be recorded for projects that have wetlands and buffers kind of as a component. That was in the code, but I think maybe the language just wasn't as sharp as it could be. And so ecology provided some language that we could use there. They also, and this is maybe the most significant change, is kind of reversed an initial approval of that buffer reduction option that we discussed last, the last meeting, and then just earlier a little bit in this presentation, related to the snags and large witty. So the final conclusion received yesterday was that that was not consistent with best available science. So the latest version that David sent out today removes that provision. They also suggested, and this is a very minor change, that we just reorganize our list of the different mitigation methods. And so it was, you know, restoration or rehabilitation, and then preservation was last. We just flipped the order. So preservation is ahead of enhancement. And again, I think that's just because ecology is trying to lean into that more, seeing how enhancement is just generally not working out as they'd hoped and that they really think that preservation of high-value areas and the buffers associated with those might in the long term provide greater ecological benefit to the community and to wildlife and functions. And then finally, and this is, I think, a fairly simple revision as well, is just we got a little bit more clarification on those new mitigation ratios for preservation and enhancement-only compensation projects. Kind of the outstanding issue there was that it was a little unclear from the information in the guidance that whether you use the ratios or whether you use this alternative method of deciding how much enhancement or how much preservation is appropriate through the credit debit tool. So we just got a little bit of clarity on that. And I've added a footnote to the table just to be more clear. So applicants don't think that the ratios and the credit debit tool apply or wonder which one they're supposed to do. And so that really is the extent of the most recent ecology feedback. Just to reiterate too, that ecology has reviewed the entire package. And through the conversations and the emails and feedback back and forth, we have incorporated all of their suggestions and integrated their ideas into the package that's before you. Next slide. Oh, that's my last slide. You know, if we want to, how you want to tackle this, if you want to go through it, edit by edit, or just throw questions at me, I'm happy to do either.
Perhaps we could start with just questions, any questions on the presentation? And then they do have the findings from the revised amendments available, as well as the late exhibits weren't included in your packet, if you're interested in seeing either of those.
And we also have one person who would like to testify.
So there is questions on the presentation first.
Hi, Karen Gustafson here. Amy, thank you so much for giving us a summary of what has happened and for jumping on the edits and suggestions from the project so quickly. And I do have a question, which is a follow-up from our December discussion. I saw in the regulations that best ecological benefit is cited as a standard. And at the last meeting, I asked whether we could take an actual look at the draft joint guidance that ecology will base their new regulations upon. So we can compare it with the regulation itself and the new Bothell code. My concern, and I can get into this later, is that best ecological benefit is not very clearly defined to me. To whom this benefit is, is it to a city, is it to a creek, is it to the entire world? As well as, is it to climate change, is it to salmon and so forth? And I'm wondering if that draft ecology guidance might give a little bit more specifics that we might compare or provide some justification about why those specifics would not be necessary. So thank you.
Okay, let's see. So that's a big question. The term, I guess, just to start with the term greatest or highest ecological benefit. That was a term used in in the guidance document of ecology. And I think the entire document is 261 pages. So it was hard to do a comparison. And the guidance document also doesn't distill the guidance into code so that it is really easy to like compare and see where one thing goes to another. A lot of it is principles and supporting descriptions or kind of ecological justification and discussions rather than, you know, one, two, three, with A, B, C following underneath it. I, just to answer the first part of your question, it is defined as the highest ecological benefit. So I think that is in the context of specifically wetland functions and then any associated buffer functions. So I think benefits to the community in terms of maybe being an educational amenity or recreation or, you know, that sort of thing, or incidental to the decision about what's the most appropriate mitigation approach for a specific project, although those things are important. I want to maybe, maybe this is a good time to look at the code specifically because I think it's really hard to define greatest ecological benefit in a way that someone could just kind of go through and do as a checklist. But what we tried to do with the code is establish kind of five sort of main questions or points of comparison that we want applicants and, you know, and their consultants to just take a kind of a reasoned look at and provide the analysis that looks at each of these five things. And then hopefully, the correct answer, the best answer will just fall naturally out of that process. And so I don't know if you're looking at your packet. It's page 28 of the amendments themselves. I'm not sure what page it is on the packet. Let's see, 116.
Code. I think the intent is to address some clarifying questions and then take public comment and then get into more detailed review.
Yeah, yeah. It's helpful to talk just a little bit about what we put in there because I think it might help answer your question. Maybe we don't need to pull it up, but just sort of to shorten up my answer. There's those five topics and we ask that applicants consider these five different factors and kind of do a comparison of the different approaches. And that would include looking at onsite, you know, in base and closer to the city of Bothell approaches, as well as considering mitigation banks. But some of those consideration points include looking at which option maybe has provides greatest benefit in terms of connecting to other fish or wildlife habitat corridors or other patches of habitat. We're kind of looking at the position in the landscape and whether or not a particular mitigation approach provides for some greater connections, contributes to a corridor, those types of things. It also asks that the critical areas report look at and consider whether, you know, how each of the mitigation approaches might contribute to achievement of goals or restoration priorities in local and regional plans. So the examples that we listed are Bothell's own comprehensive plan the storm and surface water master plan, which I think has a lot of good information in it, as well as the shoreline restoration plan and of course, the YRH and X salmon conservation plan. So. Long story short, I think that we've tried to set up a process, just in a very reasoned way, look at all these different factors to help guide you toward choosing the option that has the greatest ecological benefit. Is that helpful at all?
Yes, Amy, thank you for pointing it out. I do appreciate the specifics here, and I think this might be going on the right track, but I just let the conversation go for now and we just want our public to come. Thank you.
Okay, other commissioner questions or comments regarding the presentation? Nice, and we'll have public comment and then go through the code. All right, then seeing none. Carterman is our next step to take the public comment.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and we have one person signed up to speak this evening, Anne Agard. Anne, could you unmute, please?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Anne. We can hear you. And you have, you have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Anne Agard, and I am talking on the critical areas ordinance. You should have received my comments earlier, and some of those issues have been either resolved or ameliated to some extent based on the changes from the Department of Ecology that Amy just discussed. But I want to focus my comments on numbers four on my presentation, which was discuss the compensatory mitigation requirement. And particularly, section F, the approaches to compensatory mitigation. And what you were just talking about regarding the greatest ecological impact. Oh, yeah, the greatest ecological impact. So I find this document very confusing because we talk about section B. Compensation site is located using a watershed approach consistent with selecting wetland mitigation sites. And I read this document and I could not see how this is really related to the city of Bothell and the following section regarding selection of the mitigation approaches. So and then what Commissioner Gustafson just talked about, which was the greatest ecological impact. So I would ask that you not make your decision tonight and that you discuss these sections again with some more clarification. And I hope that you all have an opportunity to also read this document from the Department of Ecology. Because I don't know what the city of Bothell is talking about here. Whether they're talking about, for example, their surface water master plan and the new areas that they're calling surface water management areas. Is this what they're talking about in terms of what you're mentioning in terms of the watershed approach? If that is so, I think it could be very beneficial, but there would need to be more guidance in here about these management areas and what is being discussed in them. Because I participated in the one in December that was held on the Lower North Creek management area. And we really didn't discuss things that were relative to these mitigation plans. So or very little discussion took place regarding the wetlands. So if this is it, it could be very valuable, but there would need to be changes made.
All right, thank you. You're at three minutes, and I'll ask you to wrap up, please.
The listing here, it talks about how you're supposed to compare all of these items. Compare the impact with each available, all these five items. You compare them, but then you don't know what you're supposed to do with them. So just having a list of the comparisons and then having, having the planning director make the decision doesn't make sense. So please work through this section again and clarify these issues.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
I can't hear you, so I, and I, I do, I want to say one more thing.
Well, you're well past time, so please.
Zoom next time, because it is really a disservice to the public to call this a virtual meeting when I can hardly hear anything that you're saying. And it goes in and out constantly. And I, this may be true among you too. I hope it will be solved next time.
Thank you. Would staff like to respond to any of those comments?
I think I would defer to Amy.
Okay. So I'm just trying to think where to start. I guess. So one thing to mention too, again, is that this particular section, a couple of sections in this are ones that we worked closely with Department of Ecology and wanted to make sure that we were on the right track, were interpreting, understanding and utilizing that rather large updated joint guidance document appropriately. Because they have not yet gone to the step of sort of condensing that into what some proposed code language would be. So we're a little bit on our own own there and just had to use that document to figure out the direction and glean from it. I think what we could in order to develop this particular process for selecting the best approach for a given project. So in that section G, it says the appropriate compensatory mitigation approach shall be selected based on a demonstration in a critical areas report prepared by the applicants qualified well and professional that the proposed approach will best offset the impacts and provide the greatest ecological benefit. I think unavoidably, we have terms that we're not going to be able to just pin down and have a very neat and tidy definition of that. And so I think we have to rely on well-reasoned processes and reference to best available science. But I think these five things that we ask applicants to compare in looking at the different approaches, I think that that is, that is intended to generate the answer to which site is the, provides the greatest ecological benefit. And then that section says that you should, that is the proposed approach, or that should be your proposed approach. And then it's up to you to And then it's up to you to present how compliance or how the examination of these five different kind of topic areas led you to your proposal. And I think it's also worth mentioning too, that anyone kind of struggling or working through a wetland, an actual direct wetland impact and proposing compensatory mitigation, not only is the city involved, but depending on if it's an isolated wetland or, or not an isolated wetland, they're also going to be going through this exact same process with Department of Ecology and the US Army Corps of Engineers. So there is an awful lot of oversight on this type of activity. As I mentioned, we try, or I tried pretty hard to make sure we, I wasn't putting my thumb on the scale as we talked about before so that it's not like you must go to a mitigation bank, which is what the Corps of Engineers would like to see. That is their very clear hierarchy, first place you should go and you have to work pretty hard if you want to do something different. But also not to put the thumb on the scale in the other direction of saying we prefer onsite mitigation. So this, these five different components look at, first of all, what is the functions of the wetland that you're impacting? And then what are the functions that would be offered by the different mitigation approaches? So I, that's of primary importance, I think, is what are the functions that your mitigation solution is going to offer? And how do those compare to what you're losing? And we also look at what sort of the buffer conditions are that are associated with either any of those mitigation approaches. Because having a, kind of a high quality or, you know, a larger buffer, the more buffer, the higher quality the buffer, the better in terms of being able to have a sustainable mitigation approach, a mitigation solution. You have too small a buffer or it's threatened by adjacent land uses, that type of thing. And then very quickly, what looks like a really great project, you know, in five or 10 years down the road, might be a pretty compromised project. Again, we also ask that people think about and look at and, you know, describe how each of the mitigation approaches might connect to other wildlife habitat corridors or other wetlands. And I think there's, one of the things that Anne mentioned was sort of where's the local piece of this? And I think that, you know, knowing the city, there is lots of opportunity for applicants, depending on, you know, where they can find a location for their mitigation, to talk about connectivity to wildlife corridors in the context of North Creek or Horse Creek or the Sumamish River. So putting a requirement in there to consider existing and potential connectivity is definitely not closing the door on in-city opportunities. Another one we look at too, again, is just sort of thinking about the long-term sustainability of any of these approaches, particularly based on existing and planned land uses. And this is one where oftentimes a mitigation bank or an in-lofee program might end up coming out ahead, particularly in urban areas, which just by definition are going to have a lot more existing and potential threats from adjacent development, crowding the mitigation site or introducing invasive species that just kind of continually come in in that kind of disturbed setting or vandalism or, you know, other, other types of human activity that, or pets, that type of thing that can degrade a mitigation site. And then that last one that I had mentioned already too, is just kind of looking at the suite of local and regional plans. And we list a few and there may be others and some may be more or less useful depending on where your particular mitigation site is. But I think referencing the comprehensive plan, the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan, and maybe David could speak to this better than I can, but my thought there with the degree of familiarity I have with it is that it might help identify sort of priorities for these different basins in terms of what their needs are with respect to drainage or water quality. And those can be very important components in selecting an appropriate mitigation site. And again, the answer, you know, looking at all these, it might lead you to an onsite solution depending on where your site is and, and how it connects to, to other, you know, high value critical areas within the city. Let me just take a look here again at Anne's specific comment and make sure I've hit her points that she had written. And just maybe to clarify too, that the Shoreline Master certainly takes a different approach to what we're proposing for areas outside of shoreline jurisdiction, you know, and there's a variety of reasons for that. And I don't think though that it introduces any particular conflict between the two. They apply to different areas. Certainly within shoreline jurisdiction, you obviously have those really strong connections to anadromous fish and these, you know, very important river corridors. So keeping mitigation and for impacts within that type of area close, you know, makes a lot of sense. And I haven't run through this process myself, but you know, I expect that if you were to kind of apply maybe these criteria or these points of comparison to an impact in shoreline jurisdiction, you might land with the greatest ecological benefit being a project within the city's shoreline jurisdiction onsite or, you know, or very nearby. Let's see here.
And I'd like to just add to that, that, that when the Shoreline Board met with Planning Commission to discuss more restrictive compensatory mitigation provisions, there was an understanding at that time, I think, that, that the Critical Areas Code would, would have a different approach and it would be appropriate to have a different approach in, in 1404. And on the last point about the quality of WebEx meetings and the desire to move to Zoom, we're hoping that this will be our last WebEx meeting and we'll be on Zoom in February.
Hello. Does everyone, I'm not sure I completely got all of the elements of Anne's comment responded to. So if anyone had something they wanted me to talk about a little more or clarify, please let me know.
Commissioners, I don't see.
It's Gustafson here, I'll speak again at the end, I have spoken a lot already, so why not have some others?
Jenny Aldrich here. I appreciate the kind of, the guide that was put into the, into the documents that we reviewed because I did feel like it gave us a sense of the options. Like you said, there were kind of a suite of options that, that could be mixed and matched or selected between. And so I, when I was looking through the documents, I, I felt like the, the kind of primer was helpful and it did clarify for me that the suite of options available then made it possible for people who are going through this process to mix and match a bit and select with the, the help of the city what the, what the best, best path forward would be. And so I really do appreciate both your presentation tonight and the, the way that you structured the documents with the feedback from Ecology. I, I think that was, it's, it's an effective way to guide people through the process. And so I just want to, just want to recognize that and, and thank you for it. You know, it's helped me make sense of things in some really positive ways, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and maybe just to further describe a little bit about the process with Ecology. This particular section, we actually received kind of the, the joint minds of four or five of the Ecology staff people who are actually have worked on updating that joint guidance document. And so we kind of got their combined mind meld, looking at that whole section and providing their comments and discussion and, and guidance on that, which was, which was really helpful for this section in particular. They are planning, and I don't know what the schedule is, to develop a code that'll kind of be, instead of 276 pages, it'll be a much more concise document. And sort of what we had asked them and the question we posed is that we are just really concerned and the Planning Commission expressed this, I think, very well in the last meeting, is just making sure that since we're a little bit ahead of actually having that available code, that what we do here is not going to be inconsistent from Ecology's direction and where that code is headed. So I think regardless of how they move forward, I definitely got the feeling that they agree that this approach is consistent with their guidance and would not be inconsistent with any kind of code that they would develop based on their updated guidance.
Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Curd?
Thanks Chair, this is Karsten and thanks for the presentation, it was very helpful. And I think it's, my understanding has grown a lot since we started in on these amendments, for sure. I was listening to the talk about a process of determining, you know, best mitigation. And I think it really boils down to, at its essence, a trust in the critical areas experts. And I know that that was something that was discussed in the specific code language. And so I just asked that when we walk through the code, coming on here in a couple of minutes, that we specifically pull that item so that we can talk about it a little bit more. And I think that would be really helpful and maybe satisfy some of the concerns that constituents are having.
Thank you, other commissioners? Mr. Gustafson?
Yes, thank you, Sarah Gustafson here. It sounds like we will have the opportunity to go through the code a little bit more line by line for specific clarification.
Yes, I would expect we'd do that as we did for the previous item. Saying that and looking at the time, I wonder that we might end up continuing this. I see this possibility. Yeah, we'll go through the code.
Okay, and thanks to Amy. It's, it's very difficult to try to capture the spirit without having the letter, so I'm glad that you were able to pull that together, reaching out to some of the other Ecology folks. Thank you.
So, other commissioners? And were there any other public comments? We received some written comments and addressed some questions from those comments from staff.
Yeah, just, thank you, Mr. Chair, there were two, two individuals who provided written comments. Those were forwarded to you, one was Anne Agard, the other was Lefender Denzel. And those have been provided to the commission. And those are all the comments and speakers that we have this evening.
And those will be added to the findings.
And commissioners, any questions? I believe the second comment was a simple supportive of the process and the outcome.
Yes.
All right, well, seeing no further comments or questions from staff, let's move on to the code. We've got about a half hour scheduled, we can always extend a little bit. Let's start rolling.
Can you see this now?
Yes.
So we have highlighted the, the new items that were added since the packet was distributed last week. And given the time, if, if you do feel like you're going to continue this, it might be good to focus on, on the sections that are, where you have the most, the most questions.
So, um, yeah, seeing as there are 40 pages here, 30 minutes left, I don't think you could do it justice going through word by word. And Director Cotterman, I, I don't believe there's a time pressure to complete it.
That's, yeah, that's correct. Yeah, there, there is no time limit. I, I would suggest though, that since the, the code amendments really reflect the discussion and the presentations that the commission has got over in the past. So if, if you do want to do this in a little more abbreviated fashion, I guess, for lack of a better phrase, maybe just focus on those things that have changed since last time that are highlighted, as well as any specific questions or comments that the commissioners have, rather than going through each, each individual section.
Unless there are objections, let's proceed like that and we'll see where we are in about 20, 25 minutes.
Okay. And Dave, if I could ask you to go to full screen on this, because I'm, I'm seeing a, if you'd make your Word document full screen.
Oh, I thought I was, but.
I'm actually seeing a couple of overlapping documents.
Yeah, we might see the previous document.
And commissioners, if you go to the left side of your screen, you should get a pop-up menu that allows you to zoom in and enlarge.
No, that didn't work.
Yeah, those are the findings.
Chair.
Dave. Any better?
So Jenny Aldrich is here and I'm wondering if we could get a page number. It's difficult for me to follow along, so if we get a page number into the agenda, I'll follow along in the, in, in the agenda instead of on the document. I'm, it's not loading the screen properly, so sometimes I can't see the page.
So, I'm looking at this latest document that wasn't in the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So I'm on, currently I'm on page eight. And I'm still scrolling down to come to the first highlighted area. I apologize if I'm making anyone see.
There you go.
Okay, so now we're on page, top page of 14, which is Section 1404, 520. A, eight. This is a relatively minor change that Amy described, the provision for clarifying the language about providing notice on the title and recording that to identify wetlands and buffers on project sites in a way that will run with the land.
And is that enforced by complaint? I assume there are many of those out there and you're not.
No, we, this would be enforced by us as part of the review process. We wouldn't final a project until they had provided record, or a record that they had recorded this. And then, and then it's there on the title for any future enforcement actions that might be necessary.
But then years forward, once it is on the title and the area is established, were there encroachment? That's not something that's actively monitored, is it?
It is for the first 10 years, but after that, it would be, yeah, it would be on a complaint basis or if, if, or if staff noticed something that they thought was out of the ordinary and. Or if, if, or if staff noticed something that they thought was out of the ordinary and, and checked the record. And Amy, you can direct me to the sections that, that you most wanted feedback from, or about. Here at the bottom of page 18 of the revised document in 1404.530 is language that ecology requested about where the, the extent of a buffer is limited by an existing non-conforming, legally established, non-conforming structure like a roadway or building, et cetera. They just requested that we add the word "non-conforming" to existing legally established throughout this section. And this is the section that with their final review comments, that they suggested that this non-vegetative enhancements to reduce the buffer width be removed. We have done that. I guess that whole section should be highlighted. And moving. And. This is the section having to do with moving preservation up on the list of, of mitigation strategies. Amy, feel free to jump in.
Yeah. I think that's a pretty straightforward edit there. They're just trying to send the message that they now prefer preservation over enhancement. It used to be that preservation was sort of a last resort. And if you did want to go down that route, you had some very, very large ratios that were, would go along with that. And so it was pretty expensive and, and hard to even, hard to even undertake. So we've tried to make that easier because they would like to see more of that. This is probably, section F, I think, just, which was, we just scooted past it, is probably the one that I think everyone was maybe most interested in. And that's the, the process for sort of determining which mitigation approach does provide the best, the greatest ecological benefit. I think it's just a little bit up, at least on my screen.
Oh, sorry. I was going to the.
There we are. I think that's it. Sorry. Yeah, F is just basically outlining what the different approaches are. So it just explains wetland mitigation banks and sort of some simple criteria for when those are appropriate in lieu fee, and then the permit to responsible mitigation. And then the next section G, not F, sorry. G is the one that sort of outlines the process for demonstrating that your proposal is the best, has the greatest ecological benefit with those kind of five sort of comparison points. I don't know if there's more questions about that section, or if it's just.
Commissioner Gustafson has a question, I believe.
Thanks, Sarah Gustafson here. I did want to follow up on Commissioner Curd's note about defining the wetland professional. I'm not sure what Commissioner Curd had in mind. I do know that constituents have been very concerned about potential incentives to afford a wetland professional to provide a favorable report. And of course, this is natural. I think we've heard from perhaps some developers who are really trying to do their best to follow these guidelines as well as perform ecological function. And that, but it is still a concern among constituents. Also, I do have a slightly subtle question. Is there any requirements that the ecological professional not have a conflict of interest? For example, with a wetland mitigation bank provider of credits? So those are the questions I have about that. And perhaps there is some way we could talk about the oversight in the code, whether that's from ecology or from another independent party, if that does not eclipse what ecology has suggested. Thank you.
I, I think there is a, well, I don't think, there, there is a definition of qualified professional. And that might be in this document possibly, because I think that was one of the topics that parametrics had suggested some tweaks to. So we might find that many pages up in the, in the packet of amendments. Actually, let me just see if I can find that real quick in my version here.
And I, I would also remind, am I on? I would remind us that, that we are, we do the third-party review. So we're not just relying on a single wetland professional in almost every case, and certainly in any case that goes to compensatory mitigation, there would be a third-party review.
Yeah, so on page three of the amendment packet, I'm not sure which page that is of your agenda packet, is a updated definition of qualified professional. And it specifically for wetlands, it's someone who must be a professional wetland scientist. So a PWS, and that's an actual, it actually takes, I think, five years to become a PWS that would be able to do this. And then someone who also has at least two years of full-time work experience as a professional, including delineating wetlands, preparing reports, conducting function assessments, and then developing and implementing mitigation plans. So I think it's a pretty good definition. And like David said, and I think like Commissioner Gustafson acknowledged, it's always, I think, a, a concern that you have a quality consultant, of course. And I think the city having its own peer review as well can really put that concern to rest.
Amy, are those professionals licensed by the state or certified by a professional organization?
It's a professional organization that administers a professional wetland scientist certification. And there's an application process. You have to have references. You have to provide different credentials about your work experience and your education. And so it, it, it takes some doing. So I think it's a, I think it's a pretty important and meaningful distinction.
Yep. This is not, this is not something you buy on the internet.
No. Yeah, it's actually, it can be fairly difficult to get. And there's also continuing education requirements with other kind of licenses to maintain your status. And again, too, just to mention that in situations like this, where you're using a qualified professional wetland scientist on a mitigation for a permanent direct wetland impact, you've also got the Corps of Engineers and Department of Ecology conducting their own review for their own permit processes. And so I think that also maybe provides a little more confidence. The city is approving it and those other agencies are approving it, then it's defensible and probably well reasoned and well thought out and appropriate.
Okay, so any other commissioner questions or comments around the wetland professional certification? And seeing none scrolling back and forth. So let's then proceed to the next highlighted section. There's some ecology comments here. Commissioner Gustafson.
Hey, Sarah Gustafson here. I did want to revisit section G, item five, which I do believe addresses the local piece that some of our constituents have brought up, whether they are residents or even native tribes preserving protection rights in this area, which refers to our fossil-specific plans. And I am wondering if the other commissioners believe that the citation of these plans focuses enough on this local piece, or whether it might be necessary to specify that this is best ecological benefit for, how would I say it, greater Samamish basin watershed. How specific we want to get, because sometimes it's hard to look at these plans and just still, as Amy said before, what is the actual area that we're wanting to focus to. Thank you.
There is a reference in that paragraph to the Wira 8 plan, which is not a city plan, but more a regional plan. Comments there?
I, I defer to Amy there.
Yeah. It's an interesting question. I think if I were to limit it, if you want, if you felt like that was necessary, I think using Wira 8 as the outer limit. If you wanted to bring it in a little more, then it could be, you know, the Samamish River sub watershed, or, you know, something like that, I think would be appropriate. I think that you would be pretty hard pressed to meet these criteria and be farther afield than Wira 8. So that might naturally come out of that, but you know, I don't think it would hurt to add a little more specificity. As long as it wasn't Samamish River from this bridge to that bridge, that might be a little too compelling.
And could I ask for clarification from Commissioner Gustafson? Are you looking to, it wasn't clear to me from your question, if you're looking to to make sure that this applies more broadly, or if you want to narrow it to just the Samamish River? I wasn't clear on that, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Director Cottoman, for trying to get through my kind of long-winded question. I'm just looking for specificity here. I don't necessarily want to limit it or broaden it, but my previous question addressed the fact that we need to show what net ecolo, sorry, best ecological benefit to whom or to what area. I think that's really important. So that's why I suggested making it clear in the code, what area our entity is receiving this ecological benefit. Again, if other commissioners do not feel at this act, then I might not pursue it. Thank you.
So other commissioners, any feedback on this point? Commissioner Olson.
I guess my question would be, do other municipalities get that specific? Like what, what's the risk if we don't? What's the benefit if we do?
I don't know that I have seen anyone in particular call that out. One of the requirements, like you can't use a mitigation bank or an in lieu fee program unless you are within its defined service area. And those, and then those service areas are approved by inter-agency, you know, multi-agency review teams to define exactly what the appropriate service area is. And those are established kind of using that watershed approach. And they're, they are very specific to basins or sub-basins in their application. So I think kind of, again, for that reason, there's, there's other limitations built into the use of banks and in lieu fee programs that will keep it closer to home and appropriate and not result in like sending your ecological benefits to the Winachi River or something like that. Does, does that help?
Yeah, that, that definitely makes sense. Thank you. So it kind of sounds like even though it's not laid out specifically right here in this part of the code, there are other regulations that come into play that will make sure it's like for, for both, or not some other random. You can't fudge it.
Yeah, I think in the section just previously, it talks about mitigation banks and that you could only use one if you were within the service area. And actually, this is one of the ecology edits. They said, they noted that there have been circumstances where they would actually approve it if you weren't in a mitigation bank's primary service area. If you were, you know, if you were like two streets over or one creek over, depending on site-specific, project-specific, functions-related arguments, you still might use the bank. And so based on that input, we did give it just a little more flexibility in that section. It says the impact site is located in the service area of the bank. Or if approved by ecology, the bank's inter-agency bank review team and the director of the city, you could potentially even approve it outside the service area. Those are relatively infrequent, and usually there's very good reasons for doing so. And again, you wouldn't be looking like 16 basins over. It's probably very close to the bounds of the service area or within a contributing basin of the service area, or, or something else that provides a connection and ecologically defensible. And, and again, that's reviewed by multiple agencies and the city before that could happen.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. I, I would say to your point, Chair, I'm, I'm personally fine with the language as is. I think it seems like there's a lot of safeguards built in that I'm comfortable with.
Commissioner Alderks, I see you.
Thank you Chair, Jenny Alderks here. What I think I'm hearing from my other commissioners is wanting to clarify and prioritize our values around who and what is being impacted by these decisions. And I'm not sure if it is clearly spelled out in a way that, and, and it's probably not necessarily, it might not even be spelled out in the code. But somehow, you know, could it be resolved that our priority is to our, you know, to preserving our local habitats? Or, you know, or whatever we agree, or whatever the city is aiming to prioritize for both. And please, Sarah and Amanda, let me know if I'm, if I'm understanding you or, or building on your comments in a way that, that connects.
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. I can appreciate Commissioner Alderks' point. I think that would go more in the findings than in the code. Is, is how I would think that would go, but I don't write findings for a living, so let me know if I've got that right. Thanks.
Other commissioner comments? Commissioner Curd.
Thanks, this is Carsten. To get to Commissioner Gustafson's point, I'm comfortable with limiting the outer bounds of our area to the Wira 8 area. I think that doing benefits to our local watershed, even at that scale, is helpful. One thing that is sort of disappointing to me is how much regulation there is involved with making new mitigation banks. And that's probably one of the other sources of confusion or concern from constituents is that we don't have a lot of downstream mitigation banks. A lot of them are upstream. Keller Farms is upstream. The one up in Woodinville is also upstream. And so, for example, if you have pristine habitat up in the mountains, but the salmon can't get there through a garbage patch, you need to fix the garbage patch first. And so I think maybe this, these concerns that are brought to us are beyond the scope of just the language in this code. It might get more into pressuring and lobbying legislators at the state level to to advance better. at the state level to advance better ways to create new mitigation banks rather than through current guidelines. So I think that, for what it's worth, the code that we're proposing now is, it has good language, and it shows good structure, and it's well laid out for applicants. And I support the changes that we've talked about so far. Thanks.
And looking at, see other commissioner comments. I'd like to weigh in and say, I would, I support the inclusion of WIRA 8, extending it beyond the city. Not so much because I want the mitigation to go beyond the city, but because there are resources available in the development of these WIRA plans that the city of Bothell is not likely to match in local plans. So being able to include that and lean on those resources, I think has value. And to localize the mitigation, certainly if you WIRA 8 references is money. And I think we should probably do a time check at this point. It's 8:54, we have six minutes in our scheduled meeting. I see us on page 28 of 40. How are we doing on additional highlighted portions? Is it reasonable to think we will get through?
Amy?
There's only, I think maybe there was that one more, and it's just very minimal.
Yeah.
Okay, let's continue. I don't want to rush us to meet time, but on the other hand. Commissioner Olson, you have a comment?
I was going to offer a motion to extend the meeting by 15 minutes.
Is there action to that motion? Commissioner Kurd?
I second the motion.
All right. All in favor of extending by 15 minutes? Mr. Olson, Mr. Paestrop, scrolling across, Commissioner Kurd, Mr. Alderks and Gustafson, do you favor 15 minutes? That's okay, so we will extend the meeting 15 minutes with an interest of getting through this agenda item to meet total.
This may be the last highlighted item, and I talked about it briefly, I think, in the presentation. Just, we had a little bit of back and forth with ecology, just trying to get some clarity on how and when these new preservation ratios that this column was added in, compared to your prior version of this table, how that actually worked. When the table in the guidance document was footnoted to say that you should use credit debit tool, and the credit debit tool will tell you you need X amount, and the ratios will tell you you need X amount, and you might end up with dueling answers in terms of what the appropriate quantity of preservation is. So this just sort of clarifies that, yes, we have these ratios, but this footnote identifies that you should use the credit debit tool and only rely on these ratios if the credit debit tool isn't applicable to your particular situation. There are a few situations in which you need them. I think wetlands with special characteristics, which is, you know, specific wetlands, I think, that are like high mature forests or old-growth forests, that type of thing. Circumstances that probably aren't that common, actually, in Bothell. But just in case, we still wanted to keep those preservation ratios. And most typically, applicants will use the credit debit tool to determine what the appropriate quantity of preservation is. So it's just sort of a cleanup of that to make sure applicants are not thinking they've got to do two things, and which one wins.
Thank you.
And this note, right above the highlighted note in that box, just I thought it was a helpful explanation that ecology gave me when I was trying to understand why the preservation push was happening. And I just thought it might be helpful for planning commissioners and the public to see that explanation, too.
Okay, questions or comments? Proceed?
That is the last highlighted section.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Alderks has a question.
Okay, Commissioner Alderks.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mike. In looking at this table here, and in light of ecology's recommendation to prioritize preservation, I'm wondering if, like, I think I see why it's structured the way that it is, but would it be better to put the preservation column first, after the type of wetland? And structure this table in such a way that the mitigation efforts are reflecting the priorities? So, you know, it would say, preservation goes first, and then the other ones line up behind it, instead of having it buried in the fourth column? Just a thought. It does not have to be taken into consideration, but thought I'd throw it out there.
Yeah, I misspoke. So it's not preservation is preferred overall, but it's now higher in preference than enhancement. So these are in the appropriate order based on preference. So creation is preferred, and then enhancement is now at the bottom of the totem pole.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Then shall we proceed? I believe next up would be our findings, if there are no further items to address in the code here.
So are you seeing the findings?
Yes. So a familiar format we've been working with. First several items, pre-standard boilerplate, getting down to our deliberations. Let's focus there. First several. Any questions or comments? Give everyone a moment to review. And there was an item that was suggested to be reflected in the findings. No comments here on one?
Did you want, maybe if I could comment on your question there?
Yes.
I don't know where it would go in here, but a statement of our values, just to clarify, you know, the planning commission's recommendations to prioritize certain types of mitigation over others, especially with an eye towards equity to native peoples, or to keep as much of the, especially the beautification efforts and maintaining natural spaces here in Bothell, whatever we as a group decide is valued by us, that could go into our deliberations here.
So do we have suggested language to insert?
Jenny Alderks here. I'm looking for recommendations from Commissioner Gustafson. Building off of some of her suggestions.
Commissioner Gustafson seems to be thinking about commenting?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Alderks, for this suggestion, which I think really hits on what we've been trying to do. All I can say is that it could start off with affirm the centrality of the greater Samamish watershed as a site work effort based on XYZ. And please workshop this. It's a master ethic.
Can you start me off again there?
I would say something like affirms the centrality of the greater Samamish watershed to, as a mitigation site? Ecology's... As a mitigation site? Can I just?
So the interest is that any mitigation occurs, any mitigation of impacts in Bothell occur within the greater Samamish watershed?
Do you see any? Is this consistent with the code amendments in your mind, Amy?
I think so. I'm just thinking of, like, where the banks are, everything in Bothell. The Samamish River watershed, that would encompass Keller Farm, mitigation bank, all of the streets that feed the river. And that WIRA 8 maybe is too broad because it includes Cedar River and things that don't have anything to do with the city. So I think that might be, I think that might cover the bases and not be inconsistent with the amendment or restrict, or interfere with consistency with best available science and college guidance.
And Commissioner Alderks, a comment?
Thank you, Chair. Jenny Alderks here. In order to build off of this sentence and to kind of clarify the priorities, I wonder if we could just add on to the sentence? So, you know, affirm the centrality, and then, you know, in the city of Bothell, in order to prioritize, what are some of the things that I've heard people say tonight? You know, native water rights, for example, Samahin migration patterns? That we could add some of these specifics in here because we are trying to make sure that the environmental impacts are working to the benefit of, I don't know if that's what this whole point is, but that there are specific environmental outcomes that we hope to preserve here in Bothell, especially our salmon migration. So I'm open to other thoughts and suggestions from my esteemed colleagues.
Well, and I would look to the next item, which has our comprehensive goals and policies, which does include enhancement natural features, sensitive human activities, critical fish and wildlife survival and proliferation. So there's a reference there. Other commissioner feedback here? Commissioner Olson?
I would maybe second the chair in pointing out everything in item 12 on this list. And maybe we just make it like one sentence, and then we go into all the meat in the next item. That was a much shorter comment than normal for me, but that's it.
Stick with that?
Perhaps if we look at the rest of 12. I think viewing what's in there that should be, it's absent there that should be added somewhere else.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Alderks has her.
Oh, yes.
I'm hiding from you. At least my video works tonight, this hour. So Jenny Alderks here. I think, I think the point is well-taken that, you know, the city has thought very carefully about what the city priorities are, and they are stated and articulated well in the Imagine Bothell section. I'm wondering if, could you scroll up a little bit to the item that we're drafting? I think maybe we combine 11 and 12 and say, you know, these amendments affirm this in order to prioritize the, you know, goals and policies of the Imagine Bothell document. And we just connect them? And I think maybe that's getting at what we're trying to do.
The staff on that, do you want to add something to the goals or does it, the goals and policies stand? Is it separate from them?
I would, this was not initiated as a conference of plan amendment, so I would steer away from that. But maybe a good segue would be to just add, as articulated in the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan Goals and Policies.
Excluding the Imagine Bothell Plans and Policies, or Goals and Policies?
What I think I heard suggested was, by Commissioner Alderks, was not to change the goals themselves or the policies, but more of the introduction statement in number 12. But I think that, really what that does by definition is it says, what we're doing here furthers the goals and policies of the plan. So I'm not sure that combining 11 with that would be necessary in that sense. And I would caution the commission a little bit here because I think we're trying to address a couple of different things, if I'm hearing some of the comments. And I want to make sure that we get back to what Amy talked about earlier, which was not putting our thumb on one side of the scale or the other. The way that this is structured is really to provide that flexibility, which is what number nine talks about, so that we're not directing toward one solution or another. That's one piece of it. The other piece that I'm hearing is, we don't want to make sure that we get as much of the benefit as possible within the city of Bothell. And I think they're related, so we want to be careful not to conflate those to the extent that we're really changing the direction that the commission has set with these amendments in terms of providing that flexibility. I don't know if that makes sense, but I'm kind of hearing a little bit of both in the discussion.
And I wasn't suggesting combining them, just kind of providing a segue and a reference at the end of that statement 11. But I'm also okay with 11 as previously drafted without the last phrase.
One question or clarification I had on number 11 is to make sure, maybe I interpreted this wrong, but you can read this to mean that mitigation for impact has to be in the city of Bothell? And I was just assuming the impact in the city of Bothell, the greater Samamish watershed is sort of where you would consider placing that mitigation?
I would lead it as identifying the impact being in the city of Bothell, and mitigation being within the watershed. I've heard others interpret it differently.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't read that or was understanding it incorrectly, because maybe it's a little unclear, depending on who reads it, if the mitigation's in the city or just the impacts are in the city.
Commissioner Gustafson, and I point out, Commissioner Kurd, your video is checking in and out, so if you have a comment, you may need to weigh in. Commissioner Gustafson?
And thank you, Sarah Gustafson here. I actually know that I... And thank you, Sarah Gustafson, here. I actually know that I am carefully looking at number 12. I'm wondering if maybe we don't need number 11 if the commission feels that number 12 provides a good idea of for the sake of being trying to be consistent and clear throughout.
I see Commissioner Olson also need to point out we're about two minutes from our extended meeting time. Do we want to extend for five more or do we? Is there a motion to extend or are we?
Maybe we can do a quick hand raise vote to just, do we like, like, no to take out 11, yes to keep 11 as is, so we can just decide?
All right, I'll ask first. Do we want to keep 11 or do we want to drop 11, the new added 11? So yes to drop or so Commissioner Olson, drop and scrolling. Commissioner Kurd says drop, that's two to drop. We want to keep it, so it's scrolling back. I'm not seeing a strong interest in keeping it. So I think we probably talked ourselves out of 11. Is that correct? All right, let's drop that. And we are near our advertised or extended meeting time. I would either entertain a motion to extend perhaps 10 more minutes, or I think we need to wonder the other. So is there a motion to extend, Commissioner Olson?
I move that we extend the meeting by 10 minutes.
All right, is there a second? Commissioner Alderks? Commissioner Alderks, did you?
Sorry, unmuted. I second the motion to extend the meeting by 10 minutes.
All in favor of a 10 minute extension? Commissioner Alderks, yes. I can't see Commissioner Kurd. Commissioner Olson, yes. I'll go yes, that'll be three. Commissioners? Kurt, Piestrop and Gustafson, did you weigh in? Extend? Okay, we've got four for extension. We'll send 10 minutes and try to bring this to closure then by nine 20 or nine 25. So 12 pretty much added the goals as they are, or rather 11, number 12. So not much to say about that. I would think 12, 13, 14, 15 are pretty straightforward. We are getting the most recent exhibits added. And you will also add Anagar's testimony tonight to 15. There it is. So conclusions drafted, reviewed, noticed, considered by the commission, necessary for consistent clear regulation and recommended in the best interest. So I would, is there any further, well, I entertain a motion to adopt these findings as presented here? If we could. Commissioner Kurd, I'll see you again. Commissioner Olson?
I move to adopt the critical area regulations as presented and amended this evening.
Okay. Commissioner Alderks?
I second the motion. I do see Commissioner Gustafson's card up, so you might have other thoughts.
Okay, it's the opposite sides of the ribbon.
And thank you, Commissioner Alderks, just a quick. There might be a spelling on Tinder. One of the people who submitted comments, I just wanted to double check that. I'll pull up the email.
So we had a motion in a second, so we can do discussion and address issues with the discussion around that. There was one comment to verify we have proper spelling on the names added.
I will, I will double check that.
It looks good now, I think. Sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Gustafson, for catching that. A further discussion around our findings, conclusions and recommendations. And scrolling across the ribbon, seeing none. Are, I will then ask, here we are, we're all here, so I can.
I believe we've lost Commissioner Kurd.
Yes, I was going to say, I don't see him. Is, we still have a quorum is a problem regarding proceeding? Okay, so recognizing for the record, Commissioner Kurd was having technical difficulties dropping it on my screen. It doesn't seem to be here, but I will ask for a vote all in favor of adopting the findings, conclusions and recommendations as we've fully discussed them all in favor. So we have all members, I can see, in favor and none opposed. So we have adopted those findings. Thank you. Thank you, Amy, for leading us through that both tonight and in previous discussions. A lot of work there, work done, so thank you. Commissioners, thank you for attending and getting us through this item tonight. So we would close this item. Next item on the agenda, we'll see if in five minutes get through the remaining, the old business to discuss.
Uh, no old business, Mr. Chair.
Okay, reports from staff?
Uh, four very quick items, just to let you know, we're coming back on February 3rd, your next meeting with finalized version of the docket for 2021 that we'll be taking to the city council. Hopefully, we'll be reflecting any comments we've received from you at the last meeting as well as any comments that you have on the the next draft that we bring you. Also, have received the final report from the Planning Students Project, and we'll be looking that over, and they're interested in coming doing a presentation. So we'll try to get that scheduled for one of the meetings in February. Uh, we may be looking a little bit lighter schedule for the next couple of months because these were the two main things we had wrapping up and we're getting some other things going. So we'll keep posted on that. I'll have more information and maybe map out a calendar at the next meeting as well. And then, as has been mentioned several times this evening, we're all ready to get off of WebEx and onto Zoom. So I do have the license and now I just have to learn how to use it and hopefully be ready for the February meeting, so I don't make a complete mess of things. So we'll look forward to that. You'll be getting information about that prior to the February, first February meeting. And thank you for all of your your good, your good work tonight as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you. Thank you, staff, for bringing this to us. And for the record, recognizing Commissioner Kurd has reappeared on the screen. Uh, in your absence, we did vote to adopt the findings and recommendations, so. Uh, reports from members, any member comments? Mr. Piestrop?
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to let the commission know my seat is it's ending, I think, end of March of this year. I do not intend to continue on the planning commission. I just wanted to let the the commission know that my intentions, so if there's people out there, there will be another seat available come April 1st. Just want to appreciate the room, the chairs, the commission members. It's been a great experience, so thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Piestrop, Piestrop. It's 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 an odd time working together like this over a remote access like this, at least from me, it's real odd. I think to a certain extent, we're deprived of some of the personal connections we might have had where we stayed in the same room. But I do appreciate your participation and wish you well going forward, so thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could add one thing to my report, thank you, Commissioner Piestrop, for reminding me about the one thing I forgot to add, which is the the application process is open for boards and commissions now. I think it runs through February 12th, if I remember correctly. And the council is scheduled to do interviews and make appointments in March. And then, with the exception of Commissioner Fleet's position, which is an uninspired term, that person would take the seat immediately. Uh, another new commissioner would start on the first meeting in April. So that was the other thing I was trying to remember, Mr. Chair.
So there are two vacancies, if you know folks who are interested in participating, we're very cheap to have them. So just a thought or maybe a question, and I certainly don't want to extend a discussion about this, but perhaps Director Cotterman? I know that when the back nine were purchased in the Wayne course, there were considerable preservation easements there. And it seems like there may be some opportunity for mitigation in an area. And I would just put that out as maybe a question to talk about sometime later. You know, it is a really interesting area and it seems like there might be some opportunities. So just a thought for any Bothell mitigation opportunity. With that, any further reports from members or how much Commissioner Kurd?
Always here with the reports from members. So way back last year, Commissioner Gustafson and I attended the Bothell Stormwater Update Management Plan Update, and it was enlightening for those of you who are interested in stormwater. We heard from Public Works about Bothell's approach to managing stormwater. And since all of us live here, we know that that's an issue. And so urban flooding and wetland issues around the city are going to be kind of divided up into different sections. And so we started off this whole probably multi-year process of going through public engagement processes for different sub-basins around Bothell. We started in the north, North Creek sort of area. It included a couple of streams that I wasn't familiar with. And there's more information that will be coming out, I think, shortly and information about the stormwater update. So that's the brief thing. If Commissioner Gustafson has other things to add, do so.
And thanks, Chair Kurd. Two words, Palm Creek. Did not know, learned a lot. Very healthy creek within the Bothell watershed system.
All right, thank you, Will, for my stormwater drains. Keep your stormwater drains clear and nothing but rain down the drains, we always said so. With that, we are up against perhaps a few seconds over our extended timeline. So being no further business, I want to thank you for your perseverance extending the meeting twice. And I will adjourn the January 20th meeting of the planning commission tonight at 9:26. And we'll see you all at the next meeting, so.
Thank you. Have a good rest.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.